All right, all right, Congress, Congress meeting in order. Um, first of all, let's do the indication and the pledge.
Heavenly Father, we come this evening to tell you thank you for all of the many blessings that you bestowed upon us. We thank you, God, for our city and our city officials, our leaders in this city, this state, this nation. We pray, oh, God, that you will continue to bless us. We ask your blessings upon this meeting tonight. Pray that you give us the wisdom and the knowledge to act according to, uh, your plans. And we ask, oh, God, that you will lead us and guide us in everything that we do and say. And we'll be careful, oh, God, to give you the glory, the honor, and the praise in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Uh, tonight is November twelfth, twenty twenty-four, Mainland Planning Commission, uh, Tuesday meeting. All right, I need to read over the meeting procedures, um, before we proceed. And the meeting, the meeting procedures. The planning staff presents the application request to the Planning Commission during the staff's, uh, report. This report evaluates how the proposal conforms to Glen County zoning ordinance and other applicable regulations and conforms to the comprehensive plan when applied to zoning matters and ordinances. Applicant shall have the opportunity to present their request to the Planning Commission. It is the responsibility of the applicant to make presentations on requests and to address any conditions or factual findings in which they do not agree. Public hearing portion. Public comments on the public hearing items will be limited to thirty minutes for each opposing, opposite, opposing side, opposing side, I'm sorry, with the maximum of five minutes allocated to each speaker. Comments are to be limited to relevant information regarding your position and should avoid being repetitious. If your group has any spokesperson, please allow that individual to present your group's position in the allotted, in the time allotted. The applicant may then provide a rebuttal to any testimony. The chairman may terminate testimony if it becomes repetitive. The chairman will terminate a speaker's time if the speaker begins personal attacks. Your cooperation in this process is greatly appreciated. All right, we, uh, we have enough commissioners here for a quorum. All right, uh, Ms. Leaf, is there any commission announcements?
No, sir.
No, sir, no ma'am. Okay, thank you. All right, we'll get right to general business. All right, commissioners, we need to approve the minutes of the Mainland Planning Commission meeting held October sixteenth, twenty twenty-four, subject to any necessary changes or corrections.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve as submitted.
All right, commissioners, I have a motion, I need a second.
Second.
All right, the motion, uh, uh, we have a, a, a first and a second on the motion, all in favor. Five zero. In favor. All right, let's move to one point two. Approve the minutes to the Joint Islands Planning Commission and Mainland Planning Commission meeting held September eighteenth, twenty twenty-four, subject to any necessary changes or corrections. Commissioners?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the minutes of the Joint Islands Planning Commission and Mainland Planning Commission meeting held on September eighteenth, two thousand twenty-four, as presented.
I'll second.
All right, uh, commissioners, I have a motion and a second, all in favor. All right, that vote is five zero, again, in favor. All right, one point three on the agenda is approve the minutes for the Joint Planning Commission and Mainland Planning Commission meeting held October twenty-third, twenty twenty-four, subject to any necessary changes or corrections. Commissioners?
Mr. Chairman, I'm, I make a motion to approve the minutes of the Joint Islands Planning Commission and Mainland Planning Commission meeting held October twenty-third, twenty twenty-four, as submitted.
Okay, I have a motion, I need a second, gentlemen.
I second the motion.
All right, I have a motion and a second, uh, all in favor. Again, the vote is five to zero, uh, to approve. All right, now we to the meat of our agenda. Is one item one point four, Z M dash twenty-four dash nine, one fifty Myers Hill Road reading zone. Consider a request to rezone two parcels located off of Myers Hill Road and the Lex Drive. Partial zero two dash zero two one eighty-one and zero two dash zero one two zero one. Partial zero two, zero two one eighty-one addressed as eight fifty Myers Hill Road is approximately a hundred eighty-nine acres. And the Zone Plan Development District, Z M dash two zero zero six dash zero thirty-four, the planned development is proposed to be amended to modify density and residential development type. Partial zero two dash zero one two zero seven is unaddressed. It is approximately eighty-two acres and zone forest agricultural and propose to rezone to Plan Development District and will be part of the same P D as partial zero two dash zero two one eighty-one. The proposed use for single-family dwellings and townhomes, Jake Lemmings, Si- Robert Civil Engineering, uh, agent for Laura Ebert and Anna Wheeler, owners. Ms. Leaf?
Good evening, Commissioner, Stephanie Leaf, planning manager. And, uh, the Mainland Planning Commission did hold a public hearing on this item at your October meeting, which is the October sixteenth special called meeting. And so, uh, it is on our, uh, general business for a discussion tonight. So I just wanted to, uh, give you a few updates, uh, since your October meeting. Uh, the project has been, um, has been revised. And, uh, so here's just a little bit about, just as a refresher on the background. So, uh, we currently have the two different parcels and the one that's addressed is eight fifty Myers Hill Road is already zoned, Plan Development District, this was done back in two thousand and six. And this particular lot, which is a hundred eighty-nine acres, um, they are allowed, uh, under their Plan Development District to go, um, up to maximum two hundred fifty lots on this parcel, um, only single-family homes. And the minimum lot size would be eight thousand square feet. And then the adjacent parcel that's part of this application is the eighty-two acres that's currently zoned forest agricultural. And, uh, they, um, under our current F A zoning, they can do, you know, one unit per twenty thousand square feet if they do have, um, you know, public water and, um, and public sewer. And then it does get, you know, it's a larger, larger lot, uh, depending on, um, what kind of water and, and septic and sewer is available to the property. So the prior application that came before you on October sixteenth, uh, was to, um, bring the F A zoned parcel into the Plan Development District and make some modifications that would apply to both parcels. And their proposal in October was for four hundred fifty units, three hundred single-family, and one hundred fifty townhomes. The lot size for single-family would be seven thousand square feet. And then the townhome lots would be sixteen hundred square feet. And as you, uh, may recall, uh, there was a, uh, a lot of opposition from the neighbors. Uh, we, we did hear a lot of, um, communication from neighbors that had concerns about that. Uh, the applicants did ask to defer to this meeting so they could go back to the drawing board and look at some changes that would, um, address some of those concerns. So what they did come back with was a revised plan. They did reduce the total density, uh, they reduced it for, from four hundred fifty units down to three hundred and seventy-five units. Um, they did remove any allowance for townhomes on the property. So the development can only be single-family residential. And, uh, their density is two point zero three units per upland acre. So there are a number of wetlands on the property, so this would be per upland acre. And their lot size would be, um, a minimum of eight thousand square feet for single-family and an eighty-foot minimum lot width. So that would match up with what the P D is out there now of an eight thousand square foot lot on that one hundred and eighty acres. Uh, just a few other updates, uh, there were some concerns that were, um, that were mentioned at the last meeting regarding, uh, school district capacity issues. Uh, we did, um, have a communication with the school district. They did indicate that they have talked to some of the citizens that have those concerns. Uh, they did not submit an official comment from the school district to the county on this application, but they said they did talk to a number of citizens. Uh, there were also, um, concerns about fire and emergency service availability in this area. Uh, we did receive some information from our fire department. And our fire chief, Chief De Cristofalo, is here this evening. If you do have any questions for him about fire or E M S services, um, in this Station Six unit area. And then drainage and traffic, um, drainage and traffic concerns, um, with this kind of a, a project, these would be really addressed at the construction plan phase when they do go to subdivide the property. And so those would really be fleshed out by our engineering team, um, during, during that time. Um, but, uh, but if there are any questions, uh, we do have representative for Public Works Department, um, our engineer, uh, Tony Weisen is here this evening. If you do have any questions about, um, about drainage specifically, um, in that area. Um, the other update is, uh, when the project was, um, planned at four hundred fifty units, they were required to submit a development or regional impact application. And that is, um, and that is a state requirement, um, and there's different thresholds depending on the type of project. And the trigger for this kind of a project was at four hundred units or greater. They did need to submit a development or regional impact. Our Regional Planning Commission, the Coastal Regional Commission, is the one that processes that. They do send it out to a lot of different entities to seek comment and feedback. Um, so they did complete that process. And by state law, um, the county cannot move forward with a final decision on an application until the D R I has, um, gone through the process and there has been a decision rendered. So we did receive that on October twenty-ninth. Um, generally, it was okay to move forward. They did have some, um, basically design, um, suggestions, you know, for the development, um, as they go through the design phase. And then also acknowledged, uh, that there is a, a regional water plan that they, um, have asked for the infrastructure and for the planning to be taken into consideration when they do go to, to plan out the subdivision. And then, uh, this is the comprehensive plan. There were some questions about the comp plan and whether it, um, adheres to it. So, uh, the comp plan is a guiding document, it's not a regulatory document, um, but, um, it generally does comply with the comp plan. Um, it does call for a medium-density neighborhoods. And an eight thousand square foot lot does fall into what's considered medium density for the twenty twenty-three comp plan. And, um, again, similar to the, the D R I recommendation, the comp plan also has some recommendations about, uh, about design and, um, what would be an appropriate, um, design development in this, in this community. And they did submit, um, a wetland field sketch that's part of the application package. And, uh, this is their revised master plan, um, and they did resubmit a revised P D that accounts for the new density and, um, and the lots being only single-family. And this is their master plan. These are your possible motions. And I'm happy to answer any questions. And, uh, Mr. Lemmings from Robert Civil Engineer is, is here for this application.
Ms. Leaf, I, I, I have a couple of questions for you. Um, on the hundred and eighty-nine acres, um, it was brought to my attention today by one of the good neighbors that there's a maximum of two hundred and fifty houses can be built on that hundred eighty-nine acres.
That is correct.
That is correct.
Under the current Plan Development District that was approved in two thousand and six.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
So with that being said, the eighty-four acres that they're asking to be rezoned, that you told us the total was three hundred and seventy-five homes total for both of these parcels of land? So that's a hundred and twenty-five homes going to be built on that eighty-five acres. Is that correct?
So what, um, so what they're basically doing, um, to answer your question, it's, um, what, what they're doing is combining these two parcels really into kind of one master plan. That's going to be one Plan Development District. So the three hundred and seventy-five, um, can be built across both parcels. Um, and I know that the engineer did share with me that the hundred eighty-nine acre parcel, uh, would have, in the way this master plan is drawn today, um, would have the three hundred and sixty, I think it's three hundred, oh, no, I'm sorry, two hundred and sixty units on the hundred eighty-nine acre parcel.
Well, well, okay, that's my question.
Yeah.
We've already have documents that say we cannot put over two hundred and fifty homes on that parcel property, correct?
That is correct.
So how are we going from two fifty to two sixty?
So this is the amendment that's before you. So the amendment is to change this Plan Development District that currently has a two fifty. So if you, if you approve as a board, the three seventy-five.
I was told during this whole process that we were going to leave the hundred and eighty-nine acres as is, we were not going to change that at all. And we was trying to get the eighty-four acres to conform to the hundred eighty-nine acres on density.
That was.
Where, where am I missing this, Ms. Leaf?
Yeah, I'm, I'm not sure what, what had been communicated about that. But all, all along, this has been a Plan Development District amendment that would affect the hundred eighty-nine. So when they originally had the townhomes and, and the smaller lot, single-family, that would have affected the, the hundred eighty-nine acres.
Sir?
I don't remember that either.
Me either.
So I will say, if, if there is a concern about kind of per parcel, how many, how many lots will be on each parcel? I mean, that is something as part of your recommendation. I mean, you can state that, you know, the hundred eighty-nine acre parcel, you know, cannot have more than two hundred and fifty units if that's something that's, you know, palatable to the developer.
Li- listen, I have, I think everybody here knows, I have no problem with people developing their property. But we was told from the get-go that when those folks bought that piece of property, it had a zoning of two hundred and fifty homes per acre. That's what I've been told every single time.
Right.
Now, it's more than that. If, if we approve this, it's more than that.
It would be more than that under this application, yes, sir.
All right, um, that's the reason why people that's in the public should communicate with appointed officials and elected officials. If that young lady had not called me today and told me that and inquired, um, this wouldn't even be brought up. But they are asking for higher density than what originally was it was on for.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you, Ms. Leaf.
Thank you.
Mr. Lemmings, I'm sorry.
Jake Lemmings, Robert Civil Engineering, uh, hopefully I can clear up that a little bit. So the previous P D text, the, the way it was written, so just talking, I'll say the F A track, I'll just call that the track two. Track one is the one that's, has been approved for the two hundred and fifty lots. So the, the two hundred and fifty in the P D text was based on the upland area. Um, so the wetlands have since been redelineated on that entire track. And the wetlands have changed some since then. So the, the density on the wetlands that were delineated and they were out of date. So we had to go back in and redelineate these wetlands. The, uh, the wetlands changed, so the density was two point two units per acre, which came out to two point, two point two units per acre of upland area, which came out to the two hundred and fifty homes. So since the, since the wetlands changed, we used that same density factor of two point two to kind of see what we could get, and it actually comes out less. So on that track, there's two hundred and sixty homes is what's shown on that track. That is correct.
Mr. Lemmings, l- let me interrupt you, sir.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I, I'm not the most intelligent person in this room by far. But I can tell you that I was taught all through school and college, two sixty is more than two fifty, regardless of how we look at it.
I think it was, so there's, there's two factors in the, the P D. So there's a two point two density factor, that, which is how they got to the two fifty, and it actually also states two fifty. So if, if two fifty is the maximum requirement that y'all will allow on that parcel, that's something our client should be fine doing, I don't see an issue.
We was told that was the way it was going to be to start with.
So whenever we pulled in the additional parcel, we were looking at the whole density together. Um, so the, the parcel one had two hundred and sixty homes, which, looking at that with the hundred and thirty-four acres of upland area, it comes out to one point nine four units per acre. Previously, it was approved at two point two units per acre. So we're significantly decreasing the units per acre with that updated wetland. Now, if that is showing that there's more upland area to be used there, but if, you know, if two hundred and fifty, if that's what, you know, the commission would like to see on, on that specific parcel, then what it comes out to on the track two would be a hundred and nine, um, is what we can kind of fit on that, that F A piece. Um, so looking at it right now, we have on the track one is proposed, we call out in the P D text, three hundred and seventy-five, it actually comes out to three hundred and sixty-nine is what can kind of fit on that, so a little bit less. So it's shown right now is two hundred and sixty, on, just on the concept, two hundred and sixty on that track. And then on the F A track, it's shown at a hundred and nine, single-family. Overall, it comes out to three hundred and sixty-nine total, which is the two point zero three units per acre, which is less than that two point two, uh, two point two-two units per acre. So overall, the density is down. There are ten more units on that track. And if, if we're just looking at not the density requirement, but the amount of lot requirement, if that's the issue, we can definitely reduce and just keep apples to apples, just not look at the, uh, density number, just say, all right, two hundred and fifty is what we can do on this, and the owner would be fine with that. And then, um, and then on the additional track, you know, we, we have that max requirement on all of this together at three seventy-five.
Mr. Lemmings, wh- what date did the new wetlands delineation, when, when was that done?
It was completed the end of last year. Well, let me, actually, I have it right here, so let me pull this up. It was completed earlier this year, so.
Okay, so I guess my, the crux of my question, it wasn't done between last meeting and this meeting?
No, no, absolutely not.
Okay.
The wetlands.
And I don't, I don't have last me- meeting's report in front of me. I was in attendance remotely. But I don't remember two sixty ever being mentioned at all. And it's not mentioned in this report.
Right.
So I'm a little, it's, this smells a little to me.
Well, it's, it's been, so in the P D text in paragraph one, it has the upland area of a hundred and eighty-four point eight. Um, so that's, that's kind of the total upland area that we had. And then in the, uh, it, in paragraph C, it talks about the two point two units per acre. So the previous P D had that two point two written in there. So it had the amount of upland area. And then it stated of that upland area, practically backed its way out, uh, this is your upland area, you can do two point two units per acre in that upland area, which came out to two hundred and fifty units.
Okay.
On that track. Now, whenever the new wetlands were delineated, it was, and that's kind of what Stephanie was saying. We're looking at this as a, you know, a P D, this track and this track both combined together. And overall, it reduces the density. But if you want to end up looking at, just quick math here, if we did, if we did two hundred and fifty units on that track to keep it the exact same, there's a hundred and thirty-four point one three, that would come out to one point eight six units per acre, which is significantly less than the two point two that was previously approved. So if that's something that the commission.
Absolutely, one hundred percent.
Okay.
I, I'm, I, I was told the whole time, this is my district and this is the reason why I'm concerned about it.
Yes, sir.
Uh, I, I literally have probably ridden over, it's not either here nor there, but I've probably ridden, uh, ten thousand miles with a three-wheeler back when I was a child over this property.
Yes, sir.
Um, and, and this is my constituency. This is the people that I go to the grocery store with, so I'm very concerned about this. And, um, like I said, if it hadn't been for that nice lady that called me today, I would have never picked up on this, it would have been slipped in. I, I'm, I told you today on the conversation that I was in support of this. I'm not in support of putting two hundred and six, well, we already have documentation that says you can't build but two hundred and fifty, I don't care about the wetlands, um, delineation. The delineation that was done in two thousand and four or two thousand and five said you could only put two thousand, or two, two hundred and fifty homes on here. It, it was bought that way. When y'all originally came to us, you said, y'all said, we want the same designation that we have on the hundred eighty-nine acre track, and that's not what you asking for tonight.
So if, the, the reason that, and not, not trying to, so the, the reason that the extra ten units actually show up is whenever the road for that additional parcel was added in, it picks up kind of the way these lots are positioned, it picks up those extra ten units. So we could technically make one of our ponds a little bit bigger, provide a little bit more green space and be fine with that two hundred and fifty on that track. So if we're, if we need to, two hundred and fifty units with eight thousand square foot lots and then, as you're saying, not even looking at the density requirement, like the two point two or whatever, absolutely, we can, we'd be, the owner would be fine doing that.
Commissioners?
Yeah, I'll, I'll just say something here, uh, Neil, your memory is probably a whole lot better than mine. I do remember. I do remember they said that, uh, that wasn't changing. I took that as densities, or, excuse me, uh, lot sizes, setbacks, things like that weren't changing, and going back and reading this rezoning application, they didn't limit that number on here. This is a combined rezone for these two parcels on here. Uh, those certain parameters, lot sizes, setbacks, things like that, didn't change on it. Um, the total lot number, I'm not sure about that. I can't tell you that, they did, I remember sa- say it didn't change, but the zoning text, as it's written in here, for both parcels, and they got three hundred and seventy-five units on there, total, for both of them, and, uh, they don't delineate, uh, different number amount on either of these two parcels. It's one track right now, is what they're trying to do on it, is what I'm saying. And, uh, they have reduced the number of lots significantly, they've gone up on the smaller lots, eight thousand square feet as well, so, and, uh, from what I've heard, and, uh, Mr. Lemmings can probably, uh, do it better than I can, but it sounds like with some of the improvements they're doing with the lakes and all that, there actually would be a, uh, I don't know how significant, but, uh, much improvement to the drainage out there, because they have, and you probably know better than I do, I don't get out there all that often, uh, as far as the, uh, drainage issues, you know, there, heavy rains and such. I think it's in excess of one and fifty-year.
Yeah, absolutely. So, the, so, at this phase, and, and then, um, the engineers, the county engineers here as well, and so he can back this up or speak to us, so this phase, we're not required to do a, a drainage assessment on the property, but we understand the concerns, and the owner has put forth the, the, the money to do that on the front end, to make sure that the layout that we pre- we provide, uh, here today is actually something that's constructable. Um, so, the ponds are actually, we took, we had, um, conversations with the folks at the lakes, and they expressed their issues that they're having on the prop, on some, with some drainage, and that, that pond that you see, uh, the largest one you see there is a ten point eight acre pond. So, the, these ponds are significant in size in order to, um, because we understand, you know, what, uh, the, you know, water table and concerns from the locals, so we took all that in consideration with the design, and that's kind of why you see the, the scale and the size of the ponds, to make sure we have it stored. And so, these ponds right now, at this phase, are already designed in excess of the hun- uh, the fifty-year, which is, you know, county's requirements, and then, you know, so we actually have these working right now for a hundred-year storm events. Obviously, these designs will be finalized during, um, the next phase of the project, but we're gonna be helping the, the drainage issues with the lakes, and their, their issues that they're facing. Um, any runoff that's, you know, coming from these adjacent properties, well, obviously, we're taking that into consideration with this design. Um, and then, also, I'll, I'll speak to like, what, how willing, and I'm, that's why I'm saying with the two hundred and fifty versus the two sixty, the owner will be so willing to do that, because here in this location, uh, where you see my cursor, there were two additional lots there, but you can see that there's only one lot, this lot eighty-one here in the lakes, that was budding up to this property, and they asked specifically to not, you know, to not have homes backing up to their, their backyard, so he ended up removing these two lots and, and doing that, and then, I believe they, they spoke after the fact, I'm not sure if they're here tonight or not, but they spoke with Steve, and, and Steve said that we'll, um, make sure that we provide them at least a, you know, a twenty-foot wooded buffer, or whatever they would like, so that there's not a, um, any, any visual there. But everything else, I mean, you're, you have the, this is, like I said, this is a three hundred scale plan sheet, so, you know, this distance from here to here is three hundred feet. So, up in this location, from, from here to the corner of this property, you're talking about eleven hundred and fifty feet. I mean, there's significant buffers, uh, from, from Myers Hill, this distance from, you know, here to here is, is fifty feet, um, so there's, or, sorry, is a hundred feet from, from this line to this line, so, uh, we have the room to slide this road over further to the right in order to provide, uh, more buffer for this property, um, here as well, uh, the Roberts, and, and, you know, Steve is in, even, you know, talking about potentially, uh, you know, putting in, uh, fence and providing additional, as much buffer as, as he can for this property here. Um, so, there's, there's things that he's done on the front end to try to make sure that he addresses all concerns. Um, so, the two hundred and fifty versus two sixty would not be an issue, just to limit that parcel to two fifty.
And, and you, and make, I'm just making sure I understood you correctly.
Yes, sir.
You said you would be willing to go down to one point six units per acre?
Oh, no, 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 so, it, well, oh, on that specific parcel?
I'm sorry, one point eight six. I, I'm sorry, one point eight six.
So, that, that parcel is a hundred and ninety, let's see, so, two fifty... So, yeah, that's, that's right. On that track, one point eight six units per acre would come out, with the updated wetlands, would come out to two hundred and fifty units. So, we don't even have to put the one point eight six, we can just say two hundred and fifty units on that parcel.
Mr. Lemmings?
Yes, sir.
I can't read the legend that we have here. This, um, dark green area, take your, take your cursor, go up, go up, right there.
Mm-hmm.
What is that specifically?
That's upland area.
That's upland area.
Yeah, and it's, it's landlocked, so we can't, we can't get to it. These are, these are, uh, wetlands that, I don't know what happened. Oh, you got it? Yes, sir, those are upland areas. And then the other shade of green, those are your, your wetlands.
Okay. That's all the questions I have, commissioners, do you have any?
I, I, yeah, one or two. Uh, Mr. Lemmings, a couple of things. First, I want to thank you for your explanation to my question, ba- based on your explanation, I understand how you got there. It's just not laid out like that in our report, so, thank you for that.
Yes, sir.
That makes sense, and I will be looking for that in the future. Um, there's been mention of a dog park, can you show me where that is going to be on this map?
Yeah, so it's... It's right here.
Okay. So, those are, those are the two lots that you took out, and you're gonna turn that into a dog park?
Yes, sir, so, some type of, some type of park area, yes, sir, that's right.
Okay.
Just, we're not gonna have any single family there, that was the request from the...
And there will be a buffer between the dog park and that house?
Yeah, Steve, the owner, said whatever buffer is needed would be, he'd be fine with, and we were talking about a, typically, you see like a twenty-foot wooded buffer from a commercial to residential, so, you know, that's, we're residential, residential, and he's talking about doing a twenty-foot, um, buffer there, so, that's, uh, that's what his plan would be.
Okay. Alright, commissioners, any additional questions for Mr. Lemmings? Alright, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, um, might I, um, take a moment? Is Brooke Roberts in the audience? Due to some, uh, work issues, Brooke, who organized the community effort on behalf of the neighbors out there, was not able to attend our meeting in October. Uh, I realize that we have already had our public comment period on this item, but, Mr. Chairman, at, at your discretion, you have the authority to grant her some time, so I would kindly ask that you allow her a few minutes, and my recommendation is for her only, uh, and that, I, I pose that to you in formal question.
Yes, sir, Commissioner, I, I will be glad to allow Ms., uh, Roberts to speak for five minutes, and, um, when I, Ms. Roberts, hold on one second, uh, I have no issue with that whatsoever. Um, is there any additional questions that need to be addressed with any commissioners? Alright, I'm gonna open the public hearing portion of this. Ms. Roberts, you have five minutes.
Thank you so much for letting me speak, and I sincerely appreciate, um, Mr. Boatwright and Mr. Edgy as well, jumping on a call with me this afternoon, and I, um, understand how valuable your time is. Um, so, my husband and I own Myers Hill Farm, so when you look at the parcels, ours is the one to the left, right here, so this is ours, we're the fifty acres. Um, we purchased that with the view to start doing farming events. My husband and I are both wedding photographers in the area, and we've been, um, attending weddings and different events and that sort of thing throughout, um, Glen County for eighteen years. And so, when we had this vision and this dream of, of starting our own farm and building a place where we could hold events, we spent an enormous amount of time looking around the area to find a place that fit with it. And so, in two thousand and seventeen, we came before this board, presented our plan, asked for the special use permit, and it was granted. One of the reasons it was granted is because we were nowhere near where there are other houses. So, I'm sure you're very aware with, um, what's happened with Musgrove, Villa de Suenos, some of the other, um, barns in the area that have caused major problems when people are holding events, and it gets pushed on top of neighborhoods, it causes major conflicts. So, we, um, were very, very careful to pick something that was far away from everyone else. When we did that special use permit, the two thousand and six permit for the, um, planned development was already on the books with a max of the two hundred and fifty houses. It was mentioned, um, at the meeting when they discussed our permit, but nobody at the time thought it was ever gonna go ahead, so that was one of the reasons why ours was allowed to go forward, because it would not cause any conflicts later on. So, I am now standing before you, um, also as a representative of my farm, but also as a representative of the local community, of the Myers Hill Community Group, the Lakes Community Group, the Tri-Area Community Group, and the South Glen Community Group, and we are pleading for our current way of life. We live in a very, very rural area, there's only about a hundred and sixty, a hundred and sixty-five houses on Myers Hill alone. And so, our children can enjoy driving down to Baldwin Park on their golf carts, they can go across the street to visit their grandparents who live across the street, and if you look at Myers Hill Road, you'll see it's generational land, it's land that has been passed from family member to family member. And most of the parcels are people who own family land next to it, so you'll see the same name across all the houses next to it. And so, we are very, very much asking for the volume of this to be taken back, that is our biggest concern. We sent a letter to the commission back in October, where we expressed our concern on the volume that this was looking at. So, we asked for the commission to please not to allow the FA to be changed into something that was more along the lines of PD, uh, volume. Um, with, um, the houses that it's talking about currently, that, if you take that with two point six eight people per household, that's about nine hundred and seventy-eight people all of a sudden put into the tiny little community, you multiply the amount of cars, and then all of a sudden, you start looking like an additional two hundred and fifty to three hundred cars a day on Myers Hill. I appreciate some might be going down through the lakes, but half of them will probably come through us as they go down through the schools, go over to the, um, the shops across the street, and then also just use it as a way in and out of the neighborhood, which would be very, very detrimental to our street and to our way of life. The other thing I wanted to speak on is, as a farm owner, and I also want to speak on the behalf of Oglesby Farm, one of the big, big concerns we have is the current water table. So, we are very, very, um, heavy with water when it's too much, and we're very low with water when it's too little. The farm, the Oglesby Farm relies on the water to be able to freeze their blueberries during the winter months. If they can't get enough water and get enough pressure in their pond, it would be absolutely catastrophic for them. Same thing for if there's drought. Our farm relies, through our special use permit, on a dry hydrant, which was something that we were required to have. If the water table gets too low, then we really run into a serious risk, because we're so far off the main road for us to be able to have enough water to be able to put out fires. So, we come forward to you, we know that you have an enormous amount of power and discretion, and we ask for you to look at growth that is smart for our area, not just growth for the sake of growth. We ask for growth that keeps our children safe, that doesn't overwhelm our schools, that is not a bomb being dropped onto our little tiny community where we have a rural way of life, um, that we take in consideration what it would mean to all of a sudden double, if almost triple, the amount of people that are living in our little area. So, we ask for you to put yourself into our shoes, for people to have lived out here for an extended period of time, and what it would mean to us as a community to have this go forward as it stands. We also are very concerned with the fact that the plans keep changing, and when the plans change, it's not being opened back up for comment. And so, it's making it different, very difficult for us to be able to communicate this out to other people in the area, so they have an idea of what's happening, because the plan keeps changing.
Thirty seconds, Ms. Roberts.
Um, I also would like to speak on the behalf of, uh, Shannon, whose house is the one whose dog park would back up to them. Um, not very thrilled at all to have dogs barking, lots of noise on evenings and weekends and things like that, not to mention the smells of a dog park, um, in his backyard. So, that is my statement, thank you.
Thank you so much, ma'am.
Thanks for your time.
Thank you. Alright, folks, I'm gonna close the public hearing portion. Um, commissioners? I tell you what, I'd like to give Mr. Lemmings the opportunity to come up and address, address any issues that, um, you see fit.
Yes, sir, thank you. Um, so, with the, uh, I, I will speak to the, the plan changing, these plans are changed because of the requests that have come from the locals.
Yes, sir.
And, uh, you know, we've been coordinating with Mr. Arnold, who wasn't able to be here tonight, but I've been talking with him nearly daily. We've spoken a lot. I know the community had a meeting, I believe it was sometime before the twenty-fourth, and, uh, Jimmy provided all the comments that they had to me, and I believe he felt that we, we met what was being asked. Um, and, and then speaking to the, some of the design elements, uh, they spoke about looking in, you know, to the, the drainage, the water table, all of that, all of that's gonna be taken into consideration during the design phase of this, it's not required as zoning, although we don't, have done a lot more, um, of the drainage design aspects of all this, you know, pretty early on in the process. Also, the, uh, let's see, so, in the relation, you know, to, the, I've already kind of spoken to buffers, but in the relation to, um, her property specifically, um, I will say, like, Mr. Ebert is the owner, he is the best person if this property, it's already zoned for two hundred and fifty homes right now, which butts up to her home right now. So, practically, this zoning doesn't need to go through for that development to come, although he would like to extend, you know, water and sewer infrastructure to this property, so in order to afford the, extending the water and sewer through conversations with joint water and sewer, um, the location that we have to connect is Buck Swamp. Um, there's no other capacity at, uh, Majestic Oaks for developments that are coming there, um, and, and it would require additional upgrades, even more than what's being done for that development right now. So, they told us to connect to Buck Swamp, which is nearly a mile extension of water enforcement. So, um, that's why we're asking, and it, really, his number was around four hundred units, and he's already gone down to three hundred and sixty-nine, and we're talking about potentially, you know, dropping that a little bit more. Um, but I will say with Mr. Ebert, in a relation to properties, he has, he has a farm himself, he's, he's somebody that you'd want, if you were gonna be developing next to, um, you know, if, if there's a, uh, you know, some kind of fencing buffer, something to kind of help with that area, I'm sure he would be more than interested in, in, in helping with that, with, with them, with their proximity to the property. Um, but, that's pretty much all I have to say.
Alright, one question for you.
Yes, sir.
Um, you, you, you stated, and you're absolutely right, the hundred and eighty-nine acres is already zoned for him to build two hundred and fifty homes on.
Right.
No question, nothing, anything the county can do, nothing that any citizen that lives around him can do. If we ask you to build one point eight six homes on the FA and the piece that's already zoned for two hundred and fifty houses, would you agree to that?
Um, one second. Sorry, bear with me.
Take your time, Mr. Lemmings, we're not in a hurry.
Doing some quick math here.
Well, you're asking, Neil, is the, the difference in total lot numbers, I guess?
Yes, sir.
Or, that, that's what he's trying to calculate?
So, that would, that would come up to, practically, we'd be reducing from four hundred and fifty lots, which was a, which was asked originally, to three hundred... to three hundred and forty-five total. So, that drops it another, you know, from three hundred and sixty-nine to three hundred and forty-five. I mean, he's not, he's not here at this time, so I can't answer that question. But, I would, I would say that's up to the commission, which I'll decide.
Right now, you're looking at three hundred and seventy-five, correct? Based on what we saw.
Three hundred and seventy-five, that's right.
Right. From the four hundred and fifty.
So, total on that property, it would end up going, you know, less than that.
You, you, well, you, you could still make the three, three seventy-five work with limiting two hundred and fifty on the hundred and eighty-nine acres. Is that correct?
So, what I'd like to propose is, what if we could do the two hundred and fifty as it's stated in the previous PD on that parcel? And then it states two point two-two is what the previous density was on the adjacent property. So, the practically, so it's practically the same exact thing. If you're looking at how they got to that two hundred and fifty was based off a two point two-two density per upland area. So, if we did a two point two-two density per upland area, which would be apples to apples for this adjacent property, that would put us at, I'll just say two point two. That would put us at a hundred and thirteen single-family homes on the one track, and then two hundred and fifty on the other track, which would put us at three sixty-three. And that would pretty much be apples to apples, is the way I, I view it, unless y'all see that differently.
And, I'm sorry, tell me the total.
It would be three sixty-three.
Three sixty-three. And we was at three seventy-five, correct?
Right, and that, I mean, that's, that's pretty, well, we're asking for three seventy-five. The layout shows three hundred and sixty-nine, so that pretty much takes out the ten units that we were talking about on the other. But, that, that kind of gets it to that, that three sixty-three.
You listen, I, I understand the dynamics of development. There becomes an issue here where once you concede so much, it's not worth proceeding to do.
Right.
And that's the fine line that we're trying to figure out here, Mr. Lemmings. I'm not gonna say where, that's the fine line I'm trying to figure out.
So, Mr. Ebert has approved a plan that shows three hundred and sixty-nine homes.
Okay.
And what was the number you just came up with, three sixty-three?
Three sixty-three. He's approved three sixty-nine. The PD were asking for three seventy-five.
At the three sixty-three, that gives us a volume per acre of what, two point two, did you say?
That would be twenty-five point five nine. So, the upland area. And you're saying cap it at the three sixty-three?
Yes, sir.
That would be one point nine-six units per acre.
Okay, sir.
Is your validity marked three sixty-nine?
According to what Mr. Ebert has, he, he's been doing those. I, I haven't been doing those calculations. But, I just know he's approved a, a three sixty-nine. He told me initially his number was four hundred. So, I know he's come down significantly, so, which means his lot costs are gonna have to go up.
And he has, and I, I will acknowledge that, that every hurdle we gave y'all, you've jumped through.
Right.
And, and that's all I'm trying to determine, to determine, is the area where it's not feasible for the property owner anymore to go forward with this.
Right.
And I, I think we're getting to that point now.
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, we're talking, going from four hundred and fifty, and he said four hundred was his number to three sixty-three, so.
Yes, sir. Okay.
You could do the three sixty-nine and still have two hundred and fifty on the hundred and eighty-nine acres. Is that correct? I'm, I'm just talking about, you know, not monkeying so much with the density.
So, I mean, we can, we can fit two hundred and, we can fit two hundred and fifty on the track one, and, which is what would the max, that would be allowed. And then, right now, we have shown a hundred and nine on the FA track, but there's some wiggle room to potentially shift some lots to fit in, you know, a few more there if we needed to pick that number up. So, yes, sir.
Make up for it.
All right, Mr. Neville, what you thinking?
I, what I'd like to see, Mr. Chairman, is just hold the two fifty to the track one and limit them to three hundred and sixty-nine for the entire development then.
Yes, sir.
And allow them to develop it as that.
Okay.
They got a dog park, which is good for the dog. Most dog parks I've been to don't smell, and they, they take care of them. And I doubt they'll be out there midnight howling at the neighbors. They'll probably be in their backyards.
And I will say that the dog park, he's, he's not set on that being a dog park. It could be, be some little park, pocket park, grassed area. He's not, you know, saying that's, you know, that, that could potentially change if that's an issue. But, obviously, that's something that'll be decided in the civil plan phase.
Mr. Lemmings, I know that's gonna come back before this board, is a site plan. I'm a dog lover. I, I, I love my dogs, but I don't know that I'd wanna live with a dog park in my backyard. I might recommend you look at, having the developer look at some kind of common area.
Yes, sir.
I'll, I'll be off of this board by the time the site plan comes back, but that would be my recommendation for sure.
Okay, Commissioners.
Any? Ms. Lemmings, can you give us some kind of idea of the phasing of a project like this?
Yeah, so, it, it is gonna be a phased project. And, and one thing, we, we haven't gotten into the civil plans yet, but obviously, he's gonna start the construction from what I've talked with him about at the, at the lake's entrance. And it's gonna work his way, work his way back. So, that FA track is gonna be the last thing that's gonna be developed. And, you know, with, once you hit a certain number of lots, then obviously that secondary access point to Myers Hill Road, that's when that becomes required. So, the phase plan is not nailed down at this point, but I know he's working.
But it, it will definitely be built in phases.
Absolutely. That's what he's been saying, yes, sir.
Okay.
And I'm assuming years.
That's right. He hasn't, you know, I know he's got, the first thing is, he's gotta get water and sewer out there. And, and absolutely, yeah, this is gonna be a lengthy process. I mean, we're talking, if he told us go on civil plans tomorrow.
It'll take.
With the county, we're talking, you know.
Just from my experience, it'll take years to absorb three hundred and sixty-one houses in our community. So, thank you, Mr. Lemmings.
Yes, sir.
Thank, thank you for all your explanations. You always do a great job. I'm sorry if I put you on the spot a time or two, but I was just trying to understand this better.
I'm glad my phone's got a calculator.
Yes, sir. Thank you so much. All right, Commissioners. Mr. Neville?
I will take a stab at it.
Yes, sir.
Motion to approve ZM twenty dash two-four dash nine, eight fifty Myers Hill Road rezone. With, as presented, with the following changes. Track one, the hundred and eighty-nine acre track, be limited to two hundred and fifty homes. And total homes limited to the both tracks is three hundred and sixty-nine.
Okay, that's your motion?
Yes.
I'll second that motion. All right, Commissioners, any, any discussion? All right, gentlemen, are all in favor? The vote is five-zero in favor.
And this is only a recommendation to the Glen County Board of Commissioners. It doesn't mean it's passed.
Correct. That's absolutely one hundred percent correct. Thank you, Mr. Neville, for bringing that to our attention. All right, we're gonna move to two point one on the agenda. SP dash twenty-four dash twenty-eight, Town Square eleven, ten, a ten-unit apartment complex site plan. Consider site plan approval for the proposed ten-unit apartment complex that will be part of Town Square Development. The proposed project will consist of one building that will have ten one-bedroom apartments. The development will include new parking lot layout, associated infrastructure to be constructed on point zero, zero point six-two-two acres located at nine East Chapel Drive, Brunswick, zero three dash two-eight-seven-nine-eight. The property is zoned Plan Development Residential. Zach Johnson, Robert Civil Engineering, agent for VKS, Q O Z B L L C, owner. Ms. Leaf?
Thank you. So, this is a site plan for a new ten-unit multifamily residential building. So, maybe familiar with the Town Square Development that has been under construction at Chapel Crossing. And this is a remaining parcel that fronts on Chapel Crossing Road. And so, this is a current photo of what the development is, looks like under construction with the other parcels, the other units. So, the density that is allowed on this site is, is up to ten units. Or, I'm sorry, I think it was nine, yeah, nine point nine-five, or, yeah, density allows around up to ten. And so, they are allowed sixteen units per acre. And on this particular site, they were allowed nine point nine-five-two, but rounded up, it was ten units. So, they, they do meet the density, is the moral of that story for this parcel. They do, are they required to have twenty parking spaces? They do have twenty-four parking spaces proposed. And then they have an existing buffer along Chapel Crossing, a type E buffer. So, this is the, is the survey of the, or the plat of the property. So, this is the parcel right here. And this is their proposed site plan. So, they will have parking off of, I think it's Town Square Drive here. So, the parking does not front on Chapel Crossing, so the building would be fronting on Chapel Crossing. Just a zoom in of the site. And I did just, the engineer team prior to this meeting did let me know that this is actually gonna be a two, a two-level building instead of a three level. So, this is an, an older rendering. They do have an updated rendering that'll be two stories instead of a three stories that's shown here. And these are your possible motions. And Wesley Frank's from Robert Civil Engineering is here for this application. Thank you.
All right, any questions for Ms. Leaf? All right. We got a man here tonight.
Good evening, Commissioners. Always nice to see you. Hearing any questions you may have on the application and request approval as presented. Like Ms. Leaf said, we do have an updated building permit package that's been completed, actually submitted. So, hopefully, if this passes, we'll get that ball rolling tomorrow. But, yes, it's two stories, five units on the bottom, five units on the top, with a total of ten one-bedroom apartments.
All right, Commissioners, do you have any questions? For Mr. Hightower? All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we need to open the public hearing portion of this agenda. Anybody that would like to, anybody that would like to speak in favor, please step forward. Hearing none, seeing none. Anybody that would like to speak in opposition, please step forward. Hearing none, seeing none. I'm gonna close the public hearing portion. Commissioners.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve SP dash two-four dash two-eight as presented.
I'll second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. All in favor? Five-zero. All right, moving right along to two point two, ZM dash two-four dash two-zero, Highway eighty-two at Majestic Oaks. PD text revision, consideration of an amendment to an existing Plan Development PD District, ZM fifty-four thirty-one pertaining to the development standards. Property is located at thirty-four eighty-two, how, thirty-four eighty-four, Highway eighty-two, Brunswick, Georgia. Partial zero three dash one-nine-nine-three-six. Zach Johnson, Robert Civil Engineering, agent for Simco Investment Group LLC, owner. Ms. Leaf?
Thank you. So, this is the Majestic Oaks parcel that does, it is front eighty-two, and it's at the intersection of Majestic Oaks Drive and Highway eighty-two. So, there's been a couple other Plan Development District amendments to this parcel. They are planning to do multifamily development. And the, the change that's proposed with this Plan Development District amendment is regarding the, the lot sizes. So, the density is remaining the same. So, they're referring back to the medium residential zoning district, which is sixteen units per acre. So, the current PD text does allow a, a minimum of two thousand square feet for a townhouse, and then a six thousand square foot minimum lot size for a single-family dwelling. This proposed PD amendment would reduce those. So, the proposed townhouse under this proposed PD amendment would be sixteen hundred square feet minimum lot size for a townhouse. And then, for the single-family, it'd be thirty-six hundred square feet minimum lot size. And so, this is what had been the, the plans, I think it was the master plan from, from the past PD amendment. And then, this is their proposed concept plan. So, they do have access here off of Highway eighty-two. Off to the right-hand side is, is Majestic Oaks Drive. And this is the Scarlet Cemetery parcel that's right in the middle here. And these are your possible motions. So, really, the only, the only change you're requesting is the lot sizes, so, just as a refresher on the screen. And Charles Way is representing the owner this evening, as well as Jake Lemmings from Robert Civil Engineering, if you have any questions.
All right, Commissioners, do we have any questions for Ms. Leaf? Thank you, Ms. Leaf. All right, could I see the agent?
Jake Lemmings, Robert Civil Engineering. So, Stephanie gave a good overview. If I can scroll down to the site plan. So, really, the reason for this request, it, it doesn't really affect density at all. So, we can get right now sixteen units per acre on the site and, which comes out to around two hundred and forty units, and we're proposing to do a hundred and sixty. The real reason for this request is, and, and Charles can speak to it as well, is the, the desire to plat these properties so that we can sell these. What you see right here can happen, but it would have to be rentals. We don't need to come to zoning for that. But, due to the, the plating and the zoning, we would have to, they would have to do these as rentals, and the desire is to, you know, do these lots as, as P simple and, and sell the property, or sell the individual lots. So, that's kind of why we're here. The, the, what, the density that would have put us at, you know, we're looking, like I said, we're looking at that a hundred and sixty, and, you know, the max is that, that two forty. So, happy to answer any questions you have, and, and Charles is here as well to answer any questions you have.
All right, do you have any questions for Mr. Lemmings? Thank you, Mr. Lemmings. Mr. Charles, will you step forward?
Yes, sir.
Will you state your name, please?
Charles Way.
Charles Way. All right, do we have any questions for Mr. Way? All right, I'm sorry for making you stand up, Mr. Way, but we didn't, I, I didn't catch your last name. Thank you so much, sir.
Way, W A Y. I just wanna clarify that the, in the presentation, it said that, that we were proposing a multifamily residential project. This is actually taking it from a multifamily to a single-family detached and attached. So, this site plan was approved with a hundred and sixty-one units, but with no lot lines or right-of-ways. We simply took it down to a hundred and sixty and put lot lines in there so that we could subdivide it.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Ms. Ms. Leaf, did you take note of that?
I did.
Okay. Yes, ma'am. All right, Commissioners, discussion? We, we better have a public hearing first, what you think?
Yeah, we will.
All right.
Such as it, that it is.
Would anybody like to speak in opposition of this item number? All right, hearing none, seeing none. Would anybody like to speak in favor of this? Hearing none, seeing none. I'm gonna close the public hearing portion. All right, Mr. Neville?
I'll make a comment, and then I'll be happy to make a motion. When I first saw it with the reduced sizes in the townhomes and all that, that's something that's offered right now in our, our. We have that already in our zoning on that. So, that didn't bother me. The smaller lot size first, I was a little concerned. But, I think you're gonna see a lot of subdivisions trying to come in with smaller lots, because a lot of people don't want that sort of maintenance issue on that.
I hundred percent know that.
And I, I think this will do well.
Our, our children wanna live on a posted stamp lot. They don't want what mom and daddy has.
No, you are. Second floor, that's right. Balcony, that's all they need. No yard, second floor, that's right. Balcony, that's all they need. That being said, I'd like to make a motion to approve ZM dash two-four dash two-zero as presented.
All right.
Second the motion?
All right, I have a motion and a second. All in favor? The count is again five-zero. Thank you very much for everybody coming. Thank you, Ms. Leaf. You did a great job, as usual.
Thank you all.
Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn is accepted and granted, and.